All right, it is 6:00 PM, so we will start our city council work session. We have one topic, which is the 2024 general fund budget.
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
And mic check, Laura?
Yep, it's on.
Okay.
I turned it off and turned it back on. You should have at your place a copy of our PowerPoint presentation. I'll have Emily put that on the screen. And so I'm just going to kind of walk through that and the memo. And then there are some additional handouts at your place as well, which are some different illustrations of the mill levy scenarios that were included in the memo, as well as just a recap of supplementals. And so we'll kind of go through there. The memo, there was quite a bit of information that was duplicated from our July 5th work session or committee meeting packet. But I always like to kind of keep the conversations connected for folks who may come in at whatever point in our budget discussions. But I didn't really, this memo and our focus this evening is to have a specific conversation around potential mill levy for the 2024 budget. As you're all aware, we have to notify the county clerk by tomorrow of our intent to exceed revenue neutral, the revenue neutral rate, and if also set a maximum mill levy rate for 2024, as well as the date and time of the public hearing, if we are exceeding revenue neutral. So those resolutions were included in your finance and admin packet on July 5th, and they appear as action items on tonight's legislative agenda. So what I want to do is just sort of focus, recap some of the information that we covered about the property tax revenue stream in the general fund, what's been happening with assessed valuation and mill levy over the last couple of years, coming back to, or maybe starting with priorities, objectives, because that's really what drives all of our decisions in the budget. What are the priorities that we've collected through our citizen surveys, through our conversations, through our ongoing work, through council retreats and goal-setting sessions? And then just to kind of look at the potential financial impacts of all of those kinds of things. So as we talked about on July 5th, our assessed valuation is expected to increase from 2022 to 2023. For the last several years, that has been driven, our increases have been driven primarily by increases in residential, both single-family and multifamily properties. But our change in projected assessed valuation is about 13.8 million. That will change slightly, but I don't expect that to change significantly. So as I think you're all aware, revenue neutral is a concept that for several years, we had sort of this property tax lid concept. And then that was redone through the legislative process to come up with this process of revenue neutral, which essentially says, we have a mill levy that generates exactly the same amount of property tax revenue as we did in the prior year. Now, if you think about your own household, or if you have a business, your costs and expenses do not stay static from year to year. You can generally expect increases, whether that's in wages and salaries, whether that's in the cost of fuel, whether that's in the cost of food, there are a number of things. So essentially, the revenue neutral concept asks every city in the state to pay for the next year's goals and operations at last year's prices. And so the county now, we go through this process where if we want to exceed revenue neutral and take advantage of any of the growth that we have in our assessed valuation, we have to provide notice to the county of our intent to do so and set that maximum mill levy rate. And then they generate a notice that goes to all property owners in the county with that, and it shows the projected impact on the next year's tax bill. And then we have to hold a public hearing, and there's an opportunity for protest and a whole variety of things. What we have intended to do, and it's really, in many ways, it's sort of the same philosophy that we've had for many years and most cities have had. And that is, you know, you take advantage of that growth in assessed valuation to be able to help keep up with the cost of inflation and other things that are impacting your budget or goals and projects and priorities that you've identified that your residents would like to see. So let me go to the next slide, please. I kind of jumped ahead. So we looked at this slide on the fifth, just a reminder of where do those priorities, goals and objectives come from? Our citizens, the council, boards and commissions, staff, all of those things feed into our annual budget process. Next slide. And then I went back to our 2021 Direction Finder survey, because we asked a question there about what our residents would support in terms of where they saw the need for increased city investment in current or future unmet needs. And this is the results from that 2021 survey, which I think we're all familiar with. Streets, both neighborhood streets and major thoroughfares are at the top. Maintenance and improvement of city parks, public safety and police services, redevelopment of commercial services, and you can see there. So this is what we have used to look at our key performance areas. We've talked about these, your council budget surveys over the last couple of years have aligned similarly with these priorities. And later in our conversation this evening, we'll kind of look at, we also ask the question of how much are residents willing to support potentially in increased cost or payment to support those current or future unmet needs? And so that slide or that information was included in the memo. And we'll kind of conclude with that when we get through the various scenarios. So next slide, please. So as we've talked about, we're looking at roughly a 7% increase change in valuation. And that does not impact every property owner the same. And go, actually, Emily, please go to the next slide. We touched on this on the fifth, but if you look in the corner here of slide number six, this is information that came from the assessor's office, looking at the number of properties and the estimated percent increase for 2024. So you can see, you know, the majority of homes are going to be somewhere in that 3, 3 to 10% range. Some will be higher, some will be lower, some will have no increase at all. And you can see there's a small number of properties that actually would have a decrease. So go back to the previous slide, please. So as we've talked about in the last two budget cycles, our current mill rate is 16.374. We've lost mills, actually, over the last several years through a variety of factors. So some of that has been every year, there's slight fluctuation in final assessed valuation from the time we put the budget together till the time those numbers are certified finally in October or November. We've also seen some fluctuation in reporting forms for the state as we've had TIF districts that have come online. I think we have resolved that issue, and you sort of see we maintained. But when we started the conversation back in 2016, you may recall, we converted the transportation utility fee to mills to be able to continue forward progress on our street maintenance program. And again, at that time, we looked at Direction Finder survey to kind of look and see what the equivalent of that was. But we converted, we were generating about $750,000 a year through the transportation utility fee that was going towards streets. And in the current year's budget, we're actually transferring a million nine. But we had been at about that million four mark. So over time, as we've seen increases in assessed valuation, we've been consistent in taking a portion of that and staying committed to transferring that to the capital improvement program specifically for streets. And I think that is certainly based on the Direction Finder survey results and the conversations that the council has had, certainly still a high priority. If we look at, and I included it on this slide, but it was also included in the memo, if we focus really on just the last couple of years, so if we don't even go all the way back to 2016, so we were 18.019 mills in 2016 when we made that conversion. We are now at 16.374. Yet we've continued to maintain that same roughly equivalent of seven mills, which is what the transportation utility fee was generating in 2016 through our budget. So in some respects, we've kind of taken away from operating revenues available to the general fund because of our continued commitment and increased commitment to the street program. But if we really just look at the last two budget cycles, in 2022, we had expected a small increase as a result of the changes in assessed valuation, about $122,000. Our actual increase was only about $11,500 because of that decrease. You'll see from 2021 to 2022, we lost mills. Then 23, we projected from 2022 about a $319,000 increase. Our actual increase that we will realize in the 2023 budget is only $169,000. And that's the result of approximately $150,000 that was refunded under two BOTA cases related to the dark store theory. So you can see, even just in the last two years, we anticipated $442,000. We're going to end up with 181,000, not even half, half of that in this year. So there are some things structurally, I think, in our budget that we really need to look at if we want to continue to be able to address the priorities that you've expressed and that you are expressing as a result of what you're hearing from the community. So next slide, please. So what we wanted to do this evening was really just kind of outline a couple of different strategies. And I, well, before we start into that, let me touch a little bit. Have my slides and my memo out of order, so we'll just go through in the order of this. Sorry, it's been a long week. So we looked at a couple of scenarios. We wanted to really just, for the purpose of being able to focus our conversations, knowing we only had an hour this evening, we really looked at three scenarios. So the budget that we walked through on July 5th held the mill levy constant at 16.374. What was included in your memo and here this evening is that 16.374, an increase to 17 and a half mills, which is an increase of 1.126 mills and an increase of 2.126 mills to go to the 18 and a half mill levy scenario that we discussed during the committee meeting. So on an average home, so the average home value in Mission as projected by the assessor for 2023 did increase, but the average appraised value in 2022 was 291,000. In 2023, that increased to $310,935. So these costs and these cost scenarios are calculated, understand they're calculated on that average value. So there will be some for whom this impact would be greater based on the assessed valuation of their property. But if we look at that average home price, 16.374 mills, even holding the mill levy constant, is going to be an increase over the current year taxes because of that increase in assessed valuation. That equates to about $3 a month or $36 a year.
What is the total amount of the keeping the mill levies stable and taking that consideration of the improved, you know, the new value, valuation of the homes?
So the total amount of property tax collected? So in the handout that has these scenarios, if you look at, you've got, the first scenario is the 16.374 mills. That first line, you would combine, okay. And it is, if you, and then also on page six of the memo, work session memo, there's a table and it will show you that as well. And we can certainly make some other copies. I did not put that.
And it's also on page six of the PowerPoint, and it's on the screen.
Yeah, it's on the screen. It's on page six and a little bit slightly different version, but it is on this slide, on page six. So the total tax generated is, you'll see that there under those different scenarios. So then when we look at what the tax revenue that was included in the base budget that we looked at on July 5th, you'll see that, and then you'll see the increase over our 2023 or over the 2020, that should be actually over the 2022 revenues. So you'll see there, you range anywhere from about three, at 16.374, in total, you're generating almost 3.5 million in property tax, and that is excluding, these numbers are all excluding personal property tax. So there would be slight increases there, but overall, we're under, you know, $275,000 in terms of those increases. So you look at about 3.5, 3.7, and then 3.95 of total tax revenue generated. And the impact for the average homeowner at 16.374 is $3 a month, 17.5 is $6 a month, and 18.5 would be $9 a month. And so you can see the annual totals there here on slide six.
Can I just make a statement?
Yeah.
If you look at the pie chart of all the taxing elements that we have for Johnson County, Mission or the city constitutes 16%. If every single tax entity went up one mill, it's a lot more than $3 a month, and those we don't have control.
I know, but we also have to manage those things that we do have control over. And I understand that, and I think that's part of, I mean, trust me, I mean, what you hear, since revenue neutral has gone into effect, is you hear many of the taxing jurisdictions talking about giving back a mill. And they have, they haven't seen the revenue declines in other areas like we have experienced. And that is, so they're all exceeding revenue neutral. So everybody who is rolling back a mill is exceeding the revenue neutral rate and then giving back a portion of that that they feel like they can in excess of what their budget priorities might call for. We unfortunately are not in that situation. And I think, you know, I don't think it has been since 2016 that we've even talked about a mill levy increase, and that was specific to being able to continue the street maintenance program when the tough was facing kind of legal challenges. And I think we're at that point again, I think we've gone for the last however many years, and I think we're at that point where we have to have a serious conversation about what do we either remove from our budget or slow down our progress on if we're not willing to look at how do we fund, you know, fund that? So I understand there's an impact, and that would be if everybody had that same mill levy increase. Yes, it is a cumulative impact, and we understand that. But we only get that 16% or whatever it is of that total tax bill.
The only people that are impacted by this are the citizens. So I guess I would go back, and one thing I would, I will ask down the line, and I really would like an answer to this, is number, why? Why, why are we exceeding it? And what are we doing to look at alternatives for getting, measuring up to the level we want to be? Are we cut, are we lapsing full-time equivalencies? Are we changing things in City Hall? What are we doing collectively? Because we have control over that to not put every burden on the taxpayer? What else? I see nothing. I've gone through my packet three times. I see nothing that tells me what we've done to change.
Well, and okay, so let's go to the next slide. That's a fair question. So every year, we go through that process of looking at what can we change, right? And so we look at eliminating or combining positions. Every time we have a position vacancy, we hold positions vacant intentionally to realize savings in the labor market that we're in. We, it's not necessarily intentional, but we have, you know, we realize that we don't, and we never have specifically budgeted for a lapse in FTEs. We look at that, that number on average over the last several years has been somewhere in the neighborhood of, you know, $250,000 to $300,000 by the time we get to year end. But we budget because we're, I mean, who knows? We're in July of 2023, and I don't know what our situation will be in July of 2024. Or, you know, we've seen things that are outside of our control and our residents' control, whether that's been a refund of used tax money that we got in 2014 and 20 through 2016 that we didn't know was even being appealed and had to be, you know, was just pulled back from us. We've seen the settlement on these dark store theory cases. You know, that's, that's $450,000 in just the last two budget years that we planned on capturing, that we've then now had to adjust for. Couple that, I think, with the pandemic and some of the other things. So we look at, we look at eliminating positions. In fact, the budget as presented actually eliminates one full-time position in municipal, well, actually in the police department, a civilian position. So we looked at when we have a retirement, we combine, and we've looked at efficiencies. We look at delaying the purchase of capital equipment. And we look at, you know, stretching the useful life, and we're balancing that every time we look at that in terms of maintenance and costs. And is it, is it costing us more to keep older equipment up and running and functional than it would be? Now we're up against supply chain issues and delivery issues and being able to even order or purchase the equipment that we need for replacement. We look at eliminating or reducing specific budget line items. We have, have always had a very lean line item budget. The departments do an outstanding job of managing expenses. But we, we have been through multiple times, and we will go through them again, every single line item in every single department's budget. And we look for opportunities. But many of the things that are our largest expenditures in those categories relate to contractual expenses, streetlights, you know, power for streetlights, power for traffic signals. And there's some big line items there, utility costs at all of our facilities. Yeah, Mayor, I think Ken had a hand, and then.
Yeah, Ken?
I also think that the vacancies in staff hurt the functioning of the city. You know, I think that the lapse in the timeline, the continuity, it puts a burden on the rest of the staff. We don't get things accomplished the way that we had intended to. So I think that that's a deficit for the functioning of the city. It puts more burden, I believe, on the rest of staff, and I don't think that that's fair either.
No, I mean, I think, I think there's, I think there's savings to be had, but I, we never have budgeted. I mean, if you look, if you go back to where we thought we were going to end 2022 and where we've ended 2022, we're, what were we looking, Mayor, the other day, I think we're, we're pretty spot on. We were pretty good about when we go through estimates at this point. So when we look at, on these scenarios, when you're looking at, we have the budget for '23, and then you'll see the estimated for 2023. So if you go down to example for personnel expenses, we budgeted 8.7 million. We're estimating 8.1 or 8.2 million, and that's because we sit down and we calculate every payroll that we've paid to date. We look at current salaries, we look at potential merit increases, and we project, and we project that out through the end of the year. So I think there's savings to be had there that, you know, we can capture sort of mid-year, but we'll come back to this in a minute. I think all of these things combined and a mill levy increase still doesn't get us. I think if you want to continue to make progress on streets and parks and police and some of these other things that are identified in the survey, there's still work to be done. So again, you know, the transfers, the transfer for street maintenance, as we talked about last, at the committee meeting on the fifth is 41%. So we take 41% of the property tax that we're generating and dedicate that and transfer that immediately out of our, it's not available for general fund operating expenses. It goes straight into the capital improvement program. We upped that by $500,000 in this year's budget as we looked at sort of that excess fund balance and taking advantage of the ARPA revenues. We dedicated those revenues, which were about $1 million less than what our actual revenue losses were across all funds to an additional $500,000 to streets, $350,000 to parks. We had about $190,000 in sustainability-related expenses. We looked at the highest priority supplemental, and then we looked at merit and increased merit pool. So classification and compensation adjustments for employees.
Laura, can I make one comment? And I agree entirely with what you've said about the lean budget, but I think one thing that wasn't repeated in tonight's budget materials that should carry over from last meeting was when you were initially presenting the general fund budget, is that the cost for personnel increases alone while cutting a position outpaced the increase that we're bringing in with the valuation. And I think we've had a lot of council discussions about valuing and appreciating our staff and trying to attract and retain key talent, especially among the police department. We're, we're probably accidentally realizing some of those savings due to vacancies, and we, you know, put in a big influx, influx of funds to try to retain our officers among fierce, fierce competition from the county and other jurisdictions. And so I think if you look at that alone, unless you start saying you want to cut officers, you want to cut, you know, where are you going to cut on the staff side, then you're not going to be able to do what we're doing with the dollars we have at the current mills.
Yeah, I think that, I think that's a fair statement, and I would also add that, I mean, we just can't, if we want to maintain staffing, I mean, we're, we find challenges. I mean, as you've seen and we've talked about, we've, we are losing people. By the end of September, the chief will have lost six. We've gained through seven, gained four. But that is a constant struggle. You know, we've seen years where we had, you know, 0% increases in health insurance costs. We've seen years where we've had 20% increases in health insurance costs. You know, back to the 2009 through 2012 budgets, one of the strategies that was put in place was we didn't give any merit increases for a period of three years for full-time employees. That's not a strategy that we could do at this time. You would have, I mean, I think the mass exodus, people were willing at that time to kind of bear with us through that, through that time period. That's not the labor market that we are in or any really employer is in.
And it's not how we want to treat our employees.
It's not how we want to treat our employees either. That's right. So I think Councilmember Bolton has a question.
Trent?
I just had a quick question, you know, this term exceeding revenue neutral rate. In my opinion, that's simply a way for the Kansas Legislature to throw up yet another obstacle for cities to try to maintain normal operations, you know, a way to cast these perfectly acceptable conversations in reckless terms, a sleight of hand to sort of sound nefarious of what's going on here. And as you mentioned at the beginning of this discussion, you know, this is normal budgetary workings that have happened year after year. You know, this is a concept that didn't even exist formally until a couple of years ago. So for me, the helpful way to kind of navigate this discussion is not to get caught up in kind of this gotcha trap that the legislature has set, in my opinion. But really to think about what are residents indicating they want to do on the survey finder? What are they clamoring for? You know, the answer is clearly streets, parks, services. I mean, I hear how much people appreciate when it snows, having a high-quality plow service go through all the time and making sure that streets are back to normal within an adequate amount of time. You know, I hear our good things about our public safety and our quick responding from our police department. And all these things, of course, cost money. All these things require sound projections and kind of preventative ways to maintain them in the future. And so at least for me, it's, it's the direction finder, it's what the residents are wanting. At least for me, it's, it's the direction finder. It's what the residents are wanting that's guiding this. It's not. You know. Anything else beyond that. And so I just wanted to make that comment. About how I was thinking about this. Thank you.
I mean, I think the, and the other thing too, I would add is the other thing that we have done is we, you know, prioritize. So we, in, for example, supplemental requests or other projects that may be included in the budget. We will prioritize those. Those may not be shown in the base budget, but if we have improved our position. By the time we're talking about the budget, the twenty twenty-five budget. Next year. We have that list and we know, okay, if we did better than we anticipated, then we know our highest priority was to go back and. You know, fund the dump truck or fund whatever that might be. So that's another strategy that we employ. That's more challenging on the equipment side because. You've seen and we've had to come to you a couple of times recently to say, we've got to get an order in or we won't get a vehicle for two years. So it, it's a different world. I do want to, I think Councilmember Kring had a question and I want to guess that'd be scenarios.
One thing that I kind of look at, streets have been. Are now and will always be a priority, getting in and out, whether it be people from outside coming in or our own citizens. This is way before Brent and Celia. Some of the streets that were put in, whether it be mill and overlay, full reconstructive, the whole bit. Some of the streets are not holding their weight in terms of cracks, in terms of dips. And I just wonder. Now that we have people on board, they're really know what they're doing. Some years ago, I can't say that that was true. Are we actually looking at the quality of the material we're using? And do we have warranties on these? If it's on my street, I've got to go back and look if it was a full reconstruction or mill and overlay. It's been less than five years and there are big cracks in the street already. Is there no warranties on some of these contracts that we could look at?
There, yeah, there aren't going to be warranties. I mean, you're absolutely right. We did not have specific. Established standards for many, many years to which streets were built to. And I don't have, I don't have the full first ten-year street program in front of me. But I think you'll recall that we really, because of the cost and the needs that were identified. We, we knew we were doing in many cases, whether that was a chip seal. We did primarily chip seal in that, that ten-year, trying to just prolong the condition of the pavement because we didn't have the resources. To look at the full-depth reconstruction, which is what we know the majority of our streets require at this point. So part of the rationale in looking at the increase in the street sales tax from a quarter cent to three eighths of a cent. And continuing to stay committed to this transfer at some level of property tax towards streets. We've started, I mean, we're into this next ten-year program and really all we're doing are full-depth reconstructions. They're big projects, they're expensive, they're being built to specific standards. So going forward, I think, but we, that mountain to get over in terms of deferred maintenance cost is just, it, it's high. So we are, I would say, with great confidence. Reconstructing our streets to standards. That will, should hold up. Much better than they have in the past for, you know, for just that reason.
And I think that deferred maintenance, we've heard loud and clear from our residents that the deferred maintenance is no longer a policy choice that they're willing to accept.
Yeah.
So we're.
Sure.
So I am going ahead and I'm looking through like I realize anything. Every year in the county and on the back of it, it goes ahead and discusses. You know, the percentage increase in taxes. So for instance, in twenty twenty-two, we had an increase at eleven point three percent. Twenty twenty, six point oh seven, twenty eighteen, ten percent. Meaning they're significant just based on not so much of the mill rate changing, but because of the fact that there was been significant changes in valuations.
Right.
You know, I'm not getting eleven point three percent raises of work. And electricity bills are going up, the taxpayer were extremely generous in. Allowing us to increase the sales tax or sustain the additional sales tax for. Parking rights as well as the street programs. So I am not at all in favor of increasing the rate. You're getting, or we as a city would be getting, you know, two hundred and seventy-eight thousand nine hundred and forty dollars. That's. I mean, that's. So I just wanted to go ahead and.
Sorry, Laura, we've derailed your presentation. That's what this is. I mean, she, Councilmember.
Not Kristen, all, all of us.
This is, you know, that's what this is about. It's not an easy conversation and I'm not going to ever stand up here and tell you it's an easy conversation. But. We have, if you look at it and you say, we've given back mills. Over the last several years. Intentionally or unintentionally, or for whatever reason, we've done. All those things that other cities now are saying, I'm, you know, we're going to roll back half a mill or we're going to roll back a quarter or maybe a full mill. But we've also been impacted differently. A, across a variety of revenue streams. And I think that, so if you just look at the scenario, so if you look at these three scenarios. I think one thing to think about, there are a couple of things. And we'll, you can kind of apply that. So we just look at the first one, which is the sixteen point three four. If you look at the total revenue. Of fourteen point oh seven million. And total expenses exclusive of transfers at thirteen point four. When you look at. Revenues being generated and operating expenses, we are not upside down in our budget. Okay, our revenues exceed our expenses. What, what, where that changes is when we look at this commitment that we've made primarily to streets. So you look at the transfers out, so we're. We're spending money on streets, forty-one percent of those property tax revenues. And we're continuing to subsidize a portion of the residential street maintenance project or trash collection, pardon me. So when you look at that number, you see that that's what puts us in a deficit position of revenues to expenses. We still. Even in that deficit position are still able to maintain a twenty-five percent general fund fund balance, which has been. A very high priority. For the council. And so. What you look at, when you go to the bottom of the sheet and you, you say, what is the excess fund balance? And that's a negative number on this first sheet at three hundred and fifteen thousand. And now it's going to translate, the number gets smaller. Logically, as you look at the difference in mills. What? Do we, what? We can't then, we have that negative number in excess fund balance. As a result of some of the, the things that we've assigned or that we're holding out or earmarking. In that general fund fund balance. So whether that is, there's two hundred and thirty thousand dollars in EPC developer funds, there's two hundred thousand dollars for a dog park. There's the committed funds. We, I think, really couldn't touch. But that's kind of where some of those conversations are as well. And so there, and there's nothing. I mean, you can see that even at eighteen and a half mills. You don't turn that excess fund balance number upside down. So there's a variety of other things that we can have conversations around. But if we don't start to make up some of that ground. With property tax, I think the situ- situation is only going to get worse. So really, you know, the thought is, and the conversation for this evening. And on your actual legislative agenda is setting that maximum mill levy. That doesn't have to be the mill levy. That gets approved when you approve the budget on September sixth. Whatever mill levy we submit to the county tomorrow, we cannot exceed by the time we get to. The September sixth hearing. You can come down from that. You just can't go over that. So this is not. Any decision or any number plugged into a resolution tonight is, is by no means the final decision. There's lots of other things we can continue over the next six weeks. To review and discuss and evaluate to get to that final point. But I think it's important to illustrate that that is not. Even looking at that and recognizing that that is an impact for our citizens and our businesses as well. They're, they're paying taxes too. It's still, if we want to continue to do things at the pace at which we're doing them. That's, and that's another alternative. Do we slow down the pace at which we're, you know, addressing some of these priorities? We've tried to accelerate that. And we may not be able to do that.
Yeah, Ken.
I don't want to see us back away from what we've chosen to do. I believe that the expectation of our community has demanded that we, we answer to these. Priorities and try to fulfill them. I also know that over time. The state demand transfers that used to occur don't occur anymore. So. Not only have they asked us to refund dollars, but they've taken away. Dollars that the state used to have as demand transfer funds. To cities and to local communities, and that's gone away. So this, this notion, as you said, Trent. With regards to. Revenue neutral is really a flaw in thinking because it really has been a situation where. Dollars have been taken away from local communities. And then they're putting lids on what we can do. To just keep up with their bare requirements of functioning as, as local governments. So I'm in favor of going ahead and trying to. Balance out the structure and move us forward, even though if it takes a mill levy increase, I'm in favor of doing that.
And, and I think we can look at funding our citizen priorities, you know, through a potential mill levy increase, whether it ends up being the eighteen-five or something in between. While looking at instruments that are more narrowly tailored to the concern that we all have, which is that some in our community may not be able to afford this increase. You know, I think. Mission was a leader in its city tax relief program. And a lot of other cities are jumping on board. You'll see Lenexa discussions this week, Overland Park discussions this week, county discussions in their budget cycle where they're all looking at what Mission has done. And so I think we can. Look at that tool and see if those numbers are right. And even if we make, make adjustments that would allow for. Additional tax relief for our most vulnerable residents, that's still going to have. A lower price tag than not doing a mill levy increase and funding the priorities that we're hearing our community desires. Yeah, Leah.
I think it's really important that we let people know that they can qualify for help because. We've had this for a while and I don't know that many people actually apply for it. And of course, there's a lot of. You know, feelings around applying for government assistance. So if we can make it. Easier, very easy for people to let us know that they need help. They don't have to jump through a bunch of hoops in order to get it. And maybe put it out there in a way that it's not. A handout or it's not some form of welfare. It's just a way to support families. And it's not necessarily just families who live in small, cheaper houses. There could be families that live in larger houses that. Find their financial situation changes over time. And an extra ten dollars a month. Is going to make a difference. So I think we really need to get the word out. So that we don't have citizens that are really struggling with this. And then. I'm new, so forgive me, but I still can't get it through my head how. Our property taxes keep increasing. I mean, every year when I get that same statement that Kristen. Looked at. You know, I'm paying more in property taxes. Where's that money going if it's not going, I mean, is our portion just not growing?
Our portion is small to begin with. So the, may I, Chris, Kristen, may I borrow your tax bill?
Sorry. Absolutely.
So I think. You know, when you look at where we fall, so you have, you're paying taxes to the state of Kansas, Johnson County Community College. Another community college levy, Johnson County Parks and Recreation has a separate levy. Unified School District has a combination of three different levies. So the biggest portion of anyone's tax bill is actually going to the school district. Both in, for operating and then a bond, a bond levy as well. Consolidated Fire District Number Two. Johnson County Library. And then we have our stormwater utility and our solid waste utility. So. Johnson County. Consolidated, uh, school districts and the county. Are the biggest drivers and, and receive the greatest percentage of anybody's tax bill in any community. So. Even cities with higher mill levies will have that. So, you know, what we do when we look at. How we calculate.
Although I think they're available to me out there.
On the website.
You know, we, we take that, if you go to page. In the memo. If you look at your assessed valuation and you take your assessed valuation. So on page two, there's a chart at the bottom that's going to just kind of show you the assessed valuation history. What this, interestingly enough, what the last few budget years, and I'll, I'll look for the next conversation. But historically, Johnson County assessed valuations had been increasing. There's actually a period of time where we saw decreases. In our assessed valuation. And so kind of factoring in the catch-up period to level, and now we're ahead of that, obviously. But there's kind of that fluctuation. So you take your assessed valuation, you divide it by a thousand and you multiply it by the mill levy. And that's how much. Revenue we think we will generate. So when we say one mil, you look at two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars of projected assessed valuation. When we say one mil will generate two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, it's because we're dividing that by a thousand. And then you just play around with the mill levies rates to figure out then what. How much money that will generate. So on an average priced home. So yes, overall, you're, that dollar amount is going to go up on your, if your assessed valuation increased, you will see an increase in the amount of taxes that you pay. It's not. What you, you're not paying, no, but it's not an equal share across. I mean, the, it's, you know, and it will show you, I think it shows percentages, it may not show percentages. On your tax bill.
Yeah, on your tax bill, it shows you your personal valuation percentage increase.
Increase, but it doesn't show you what percentage, and I can break that down. I can break down what. What percentage of the overall tax bill is the city.
It has a little pie chart, I think, on the county website as well. Yeah.
So I think. Let's go back to, go two slides, I think. I mean, we talked, let's, well, let's stay here. So we talked a little bit about general fund fund balance. You know, you can use fund balance to balance your budget each year. It's not a practice that you can sustain. Which is why we always try to pay attention to actually when we get, how are we getting to that deficit number? And making sure that we're still keeping that twenty-five percent. Fund balance. I, I don't think, last year we came to you and said, could we reduce that to twenty-four percent? And the kind of looks that we got. Weren't great. So we're very sensitive to trying to maintain that twenty-five percent fund balance. I think it was interesting, Councilmember Boltinghouse was talking about sort of just the, the priorities that we want to fund. And I mean, we've had a perfect example this week. Of the stressors of. That we experience from a budgetary perspective, curbside collection for limbs, which is the right thing to do for our residents and the situation is expensive. And we'll talk about that later on the agenda. It's probably going to be a seventy-plus thousand dollar price tag to be able to provide that service. And so. You know, I, I want us to be in a position to be able to do those things when they come along as well. So again, these numbers that we're looking at, we still haven't funded any of the supplemental requests. There's a whole lot of work to do. There with the departments. Go to the next slide, please. We aren't taking away from the reserves and next slide. And so then, I mean, we wanted to look at, and again, I think this is part of the conversation and part of the equation. It's not the. The one and only answer, but one of the things that we've had success in doing in our Direction Finder surveys is tying. The willingness for a specific level of financial support to increased investments in certain. Projects or priorities. And so again, you'll remember earlier in this PowerPoint, we talked about what were those. Areas or priorities that the residents would support an increased investment in, streets, parks, police services. And then this question. And then this question asks the maximum amount that they would be willing to invest to make those improvements. And so you can see here, 35% are willing to invest somewhere between 11 and $20 a month more towards those priorities. 32% are willing to invest six to 10. So when you combine those, you've got 67% of the respondents of the survey who would be comfortable if the money was going to support those priorities of potentially, uh, investing, you know, six to $10 or more than $6 a month. If you look at that 18 and a half mills, that increase per month is $9. You're in that, you you're in kind of that range, um, of of where people said. Again, 18 and a half mills doesn't solve the problem in one year, but it helps us really start to build a more resilient foundation and continue those things. Um, and as the mayor said, I think we are certainly committed to exploring ways to support those that might be, uh, impacted more significantly than others. Um, we still have the opportunity to look at all of those other tools in the toolbox um, to bring the balance, uh, the budget into balance or in line, uh, with where we would like it to see. Other questions? And again, really, the only decision tonight is the rate to include in the resolution of the intent to exceed revenue neutral.
And that will be an action item during our seven o'clock.
It's an action item at your seven o'clock meeting. Yes.
Any last thoughts for Laura? Yeah, Hillary?
I'd recommend 8.5, so we give staff the greatest flexibility to explore 18.5. Let's not go backwards, 18.5 to give staff the greatest flexibility in in their budget priorities over the next couple of months.
And again, we can have further discussion at our.
It is, you'll take a, and you'll ta- you'll talk about each one separately. So you will do that, um, as you may remember, you are also the governing body for the two drainage districts. So you have three action items this evening, one looking, this relates just to the general fund. We've held that mill levy, um, at the previous year for the drainage districts. And all of those drainage district revenues are transferred into the stormwater utility fund and go to pay for, um, whether it's debt service on existing, on stormwater improvements or stormwater maintenance projects, um, et cetera.
All right. Yeah, Ken.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that I support the recommendation. I think we should keep the best, the most flexibility that that we can in regards to this and take action to allow that flexibility to be exercised if necessary.
Okay, we'll have the opportunity to have more discussion on that.
Discussion to come. Thank you, Laura.
Welcome.
Um, seeing seeing no further hands, that concludes our work session. Tune back in at seven if you want to hear more about the budget and other items.